Good evening and welcome. You are joining the June 27, 2022, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. We are very glad you decided to be here this evening. Established by state law, our planning commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body. That's the city council. We are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. These can be found on the city's website. Commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work in close partnership. We greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a planning commission meeting this evening, we are not only glad you are here, we really encourage your active participation, whether you're an applicant or an interested member of the public. For that, I will turn to associate planner Matt Pruder, who is going to explain how members of the public can participate during public comment in tonight's meeting. Mr. Pruder.
Good evening, Charity Cardi and the fellow planning commissioners and members of the public. Thank you very much. To clarify the procedures for tonight's meeting in terms of communicating, the commissioners will have their webcams turned on for the duration of tonight's meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask you kindly to also turn on your microphone and webcam while you are presenting your particular presentation for your item, and a member of staff will ask you, sorry, assign you the keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We would then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling in by phone for tonight's meeting, you have an option to press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter who's interested in commenting during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter is given an opportunity to speak when you've finished your comment. But that said, I hand it back over to you, Chair Decardi. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. So now we will turn to roll call. I will ask each commissioner to unmute themselves and verbally announce their presence this evening. I will attempt to get better in alphabetical order and begin with Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening and present.
Vice Chair, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Doe.
Present. Good evening.
Vice Chair Harris. Oops, couldn't hear you. All right, I tell you what, not sure what to say about that, but when you try to work that out, I'll continue ahead. We see that you're here and so for purposes, a roll call will be good. Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
And I am here, so we've got seven present. And I will turn now to reports and announcements with Acting Principal Planner Sandmeyer.
Good evening, Chair Decardi and Commissioners. So tomorrow, the city council will meet at 6:00 PM, and one of the items on the agenda is the budget. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer from folks? All right. Seeing none, we will now turn to public comment. This is our first public comment period each evening when we are together is for the public to address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items that are not listed on the agenda and therefore cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information, which we will try to do. So with that, Mr. Pruder, I will turn it over to you to open public comment.
Thank you again, Chair Decardi. At this time, I don't see any members of the public with a hand raised requesting to speak, but as a reminder, if you would like to speak at this time, you may do so by raising your hand, clicking the hand icon, or if you're calling in by phone, dialing star nine, and we'll be able to give you the opportunity to publicly comment. If you'd like, we can wait a moment more. I still see no hands at this time.
All right, let's go ahead and wait just a moment. Maybe while we are, Vice Chair Harris, you want to try once more if you've done troubleshooting or see if you can be heard? Still no go? You know, log off and on? Okay. All right, anything with hands raised?
I still see no hands raised. If you'd like, you can close the public comment at this time.
All right, let's go ahead and do that. We'll close public comment. That's item D on our agenda. We'll now move to item E, which is the consent calendar. It's easy this evening. We don't have any items. And so that moves us to item F, which is public hearing. Our first item, item F1 has been continued to a future meeting. And so that moves us along to item F2, which is a use permit with Thomas James Holmes at 1220 North Lemon Avenue. It's a request for a use permit to demolish an existing two-story, single-family residence and accessory building and construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1S. That's a single-family suburban residential zoning district. The proposal includes an attached ADU, which is permitted use, excuse me, which is a permitted use and exempt from discretionary review. And I'm going to pause for just a minute before turning it over. I think I'm turning it to you, Ms. Sandmeyer, to lead us through. Good. Commissioner Harris is back. You want to try one more time, Commissioner Harris?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. All right. Fabulous. Let's turn it over to Ms. Sandmeyer. All good.
Yeah, there's no updates to the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer before we turn to the applicant? All right, let's go ahead and do that. So Ms. Felver, is this you with us this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioner. I have a presentation, a quick one. We can pull that up. All right. Into full screen mode and back up to the beginning. All right, I'm Anna Felver with Thomas James Holmes. I'll be presenting 1220 North Lemon to you tonight on behalf of our homeowner, who is also here tonight, and they will be able to introduce themselves at the end of this presentation. 1220 North Lemon is located on a private road, which is along this yellow light, yellow line here. It connects with a public road, North Lemon. There are four parcels that utilize this private road, and we're the third one in at this yellow shaded parcel here. And the parcel is a little under 15,000 square feet, 14,997 square feet. And without the private road easement, it is 13,819 square feet. This is an R1S zone, so 10,000 square foot minimum. And the dimensions of the lot are a minimum of 80 by 100. Our lot here is 73 feet wide and 200 feet, over 200 feet long, 203 and 9 inches. So we're substandard in width, and that's the reason we're before you tonight. There is an existing house, 3,142 square feet onsite. The main building, as you see here on the left top image, is that front perspective of the two-story home. This is another perspective that home at the left bottom image. The two center images, one shows the rear of the house. The bottom of that center image is a detached structure in the backyard. That's 1,042 square feet. The two right images are the street view looking out to the public North Lemon Road and then back at the fourth parcel that does access this private road. A little bit about the neighborhood. These are some of the homes along the private street at the top right and center, and the left is at that corner of that private street. These are traditional homes, craftsmen homes. The bottom right is a transitional home that's along the public North Lemon Street. There are some one-story, but mainly two-story homes in this immediate area. So we're proposing a two-story home, Cape Cod, coastal cottage, if you will, style to blend in with a variety in the neighborhood. There's a smooth panel and trim framing along the entry. It ties in the first story to the second story. Board and batten being used on the first story and cedar shingles used on the second story. There are traditional roof pitches, low roof pitches being used. Gable shed roofs at the first story and a hip roof at the second story, and this is to reduce the massing, also provide some proportional proportions, balance proportions between the first and second floor. The second floor is set back quite a bit from the first story, tried to centralize the massing again to reduce the bulk, as seen from the street. The plan is actually in the form of an H. This is for articulation, and it's to create private outdoor areas. You can see in the front, one of these private outdoor areas. Great for the homeowner, great for the neighbors. There's also one in the back, you'll see in a moment. And this also allows our first story to be predominant and more inviting from the street. This slide shows the existing site versus the proposed. You can see that existing two-story home in the front and that existing one-story building in the back here. Previously, there was a renovation that happened in the early 2000s, a two-story or two-car garage, actually, single-story two-car garage on the right that was added. And then there was another single-story element that was added to the left. This exceeded the side setbacks. As you can see, we're quite, oops, as I scroll through, trying to zoom in there. Sorry about that. Let me get back. Right here, you can see that's really close to the side property line, and then we're, this home is, you know, within that 10-foot here. So our goal is to make sure that our house is within the compliance setbacks. We don't, we're not asking for variance or an exceedance into those. Also, we want to introduce more open rear yard. So as you can see in the new proposed site plan, the yellow is the shaded area is our setback that's required, the minimum. And our first story is the light gray, second story, the dark gray, and you can see we're over 88 feet from rear property line to our first story. All this white space is buildable area, but we are not proposing to put a structure here. We want to open that up, and we want to be in alignment with our neighbors with that layout. You can also see we have a little bit of relief here, some white in between that first story and the shaded minimum setback area, just providing a little bit more relief than we need to. The second story also set back on the sides to provide more relief to our neighbors. The length of the home is also designed so that we aren't going too far past our neighbors. Our second story is also in alignment with our adjacent neighbors, and this is to create less of an impact on them, less shadowing and more privacy in that, in that manner. And then again, also create this predominant, single-story front, as seen from the street. And you can see here, we have this outdoor patio space at the rear and at the front. These are the courtyards I was referring to earlier with this H form that's here. Our overall height is 26 feet, so that's within the maximum of 28 foot max. And another interesting thing about this site are the trees. The left is showing the one tree that was, that is existing on the site. It is a Japanese maple. It is protected, and we are proposing to remove it due to development. We have submitted an HTR and supporting exhibits to the city arborist for review and approval. The previous owner did receive approval in their HTR to remove this Japanese maple, along with three other redwood trees that were on site. And they removed the three redwood trees, but did not execute removing the Japanese maple, nor provide replacement trees for the redwoods. So we've worked with staff, we've worked with the city arborist to make sure that we're not just proposing replacement trees for the Japanese maple, but that we're also proposing replacement trees for those three redwood trees that were removed. So you can see the new plan on the right and how many trees we have on the site. Replacement trees are 148-inch box London plane tree in the front. We have three 36-inch box red maples in the back and a red point red maple 36-inch box in the center rear there. And then we have eight olive trees proposed, also in the rear, defining some landscape element here. In addition to those replacement trees, we're proposing to put privacy trees along the edges. These are 24-inch box holly trees for, for extra layers between our neighbors. And with neighbors, we did a neighbor outreach. We sent notices out in October and again in March to 300-foot radius to make sure the neighbors were aware of our proposal and the changes to our proposal again in March. We held a neighbor meeting back in November and have continued to discuss concerns and questions with the neighbors, and will continue to coordinate in the construction phase. These concerns that came up were about private road management and including a post-construction repaving of the road, construction processes that we have, the redwood tree replacements, which was a big item, and the tree species at the rear fence line and coordinating what type of tree the neighbors would, would like to see as they're on the other side and would be also having impact on their, their property and seeing those trees. There were privacy concerns along the left edge of the second floor right here. We actually redid our second floor to make sure that the main lower sill windows were facing the front and that a high six-foot sill window was here so that we weren't impacting the neighbor at the window that they have across the way. Another item unique to this site is that we are twice as long as we are wide as a parcel, so there was a square footage maximum for the second floor. So we did rearrange our second floor a bit and reduced the square footage that was up there in order to address and comply with that zoning code. And that is it. Thank you for your time tonight and letting us present this project. I'm here for any questions. We have our architect that's on the call, Jamie Matheran, and we also have our homeowner here tonight. Victor, if you'd like to introduce yourself before we wrap up.
Hey, everyone. My name is Victor, and I have a wife, Anna, which is currently with a newborn. And basically, we're tech people. I'm software engineer, and my wife is a graphic designer. We originally from Ukraine, and my wife from Kazakhstan. We lived here in the Bay Area for the past 10 years, mostly in Mountain View. And I think we have a new chapter in our life when we have a baby now, and so we need to think more about like building a house, building a family, thinking more about like school and kids and so on. Yeah, one of the things, one of the sayings we have in Ukraine, like every man needs to do three things in life. So one is like build, grow a tree, which I already did when I was like 10 years old. Second, you need to have a child, which we basically have two months newborn now. And the third one is to build a house, and I think now is basically a good time to think about the third one, to build a house. And so we're really exciting about Menlo Park, Menlo Park, and we mostly lived in Mountain View, but we more excited about like thinking of schools as Menlo Park has a better environment and also, you know, infrastructure for that. That's pretty much it. Like, besides that, we just, you know, love hiking. We love traveling a lot. I'm also big into crypto, if you guys curious about that. Yeah, besides that, just really excited to join the neighborhood. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Both of you appreciate the presentation to the commission. Any clarifying questions before we open it up to public comment? And then we can come back for further discussion on the project. So clarifying questions before public comment. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. And through the chair, question to the architect, if that's permissible. The treatment of the second-story cedar shingles that's shown in white, is that intended to be? What would be the exterior treatment of the shingles? What's, what's intended color?
Fair. Yeah, so it would be painted white. So their original design actually was for that to be a stain, and then that was when, before the home had a homeowner. And so once the homeowners were involved, then they typically have the opportunity to, you know, incorporate some of their preferences into the look of the home. So there was a change during the process to make that white, and so now we have white paint at the upper floor and the lower floor.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to Mr. Pruder to guide us through public comment.
Thank you again, Chair Decardi, and as a reminder, members of the public, there's an opportunity to comment publicly on this item by pressing the hand icon on your Zoom interface or dialing star nine on your phone. And I don't see any commenters raising their hand at this time, but if you'd like, we can wait a moment and we can proceed accordingly.
Yeah, we can go ahead and wait a moment.
All right. Thank you.
I think you have your mic on, Commissioner Barnes.
Did you hear me sighing?
I just, I just wanted to make sure you knew it was on. I did not hear sighing. I heard tapping. Mr. Pruder, how are we doing?
I still see no hands raised, so if you'd like, you're welcome to close public comment for this item.
All right, let's go ahead and close public comment. We can bring it back to our virtual dais, and now's the opportunity for commissioners to ask further questions or make comments. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Chair, and as I look at this project, it appears to be fairly straightforward. Looking at the development standards and the zoning ordinance requirements, it is within the prescribed limits for setbacks, lot coverage, floor area limit, daylight plane parking and heights, all of that, checks all the boxes. It's on a flag lot, which, you know, ostensibly from a use permit perspective, further removes it from, you know, from having a deleterious effect on the community. Should that in fact be an issue, which it's not, in this case, in my opinion. There's a balcony in the rear. I am not a super fan of balconies in the rear of houses, but in this case, you know, you're 128 feet from the, from the rear property line, so that is absolutely not something of concern as well. I started thinking it's a creative use of an ADU, essentially attaching in front and, you know, benefiting from an extra 500 and so on square feet, but, you know, that's development standards. So for that reason, I think this house is, it's a Thomas James house. It's obviously customized to a certain extent to the purchaser and the homeowner, the applicant, the homeowner's preferences, and I find it perfectly acceptable and approvable. And obviously, wanting to hear from my other commissioners, and I will make a move to approve this project and put it first on the floor to approve this project per the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. So we have a motion to approve as submitted by staff. As Commissioner Barnes noted, though, that doesn't preclude any further comment conversation or an alternative motion. So with that, the floor is open to any commissioner. Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. I think Mr. Barnes expressed it well. This project is what we would call approvable. It meets the code. I certainly did get a chuckle out of the description of it as a Cape Cod. Having grown up in Massachusetts, I will have to say I might have a difference of opinion, but I'll also note that normally I would be quite concerned about the removal of a heritage tree that is on the side of the lot, but it does appear that the given time for them to grow, the new maple trees will improve the privacy and appearance of this interior lot. So I can't really find any reason not to support the project and will second the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Tate, you had your hand up and then down. I'm guessing, or do you want to?
It was the second.
It's a second. Okay. So we have a first on the table from Commissioner Barnes, a second from Commissioner Riggs. Any further discussion, questions, or conversation from the commission? Before going to a vote, I want to echo two things. One, Commissioner Riggs' point about the trees. I too get concerned about removal of a heritage tree that was perfectly fine, but I think this works in this instance and really appreciate not only the number, but also that they are large trees that are getting put in place. And then the second one is, the only reason we're seeing this project is because of the substandard lot width. Everything else is conforming, and it's a concern of mine about equity in our community when this happens. And so again, I think from my standpoint, the, my bias is to approve these types of projects. So this works for me. And with that, I will move to a vote. Once again, trying in alphabetical order, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. Congratulations, not only on the home, but also on your family, and wish you all the best with construction and deepening your roots in our community. Have a good evening.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. So with that, that was item F2. That's it for F public hearing. We're now moving to informational items, G1, and once again, I will turn that over to Acting Principal Planner Sandmeyer.
Good evening again. So the next meeting will be on July 11th. We have the Commonwealth Building 3 project on there for the draft EIR and a study session. And then we have several smaller projects as well. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer from folks? All right, I have two things I want to touch on. The first one is a heads-up to Vice Chair Harris. I am not going to be here on July 11th. So if you are, I'll, I'll put you in the chair seat for that item, and you can work with Ms. Sandmeyer on that. And then the second one is I wanted to report back on an item that was raised in a previous meeting. And I think Commissioner Riggs raised this item about us taking a look at oddly shaped lots, especially pie-shaped lots, and also the potential on fence heights. The suggestion being that there might be a pathway to have a simple adjustment that we could recommend to the city council that would end up saving applicant staff and our time when they come before us. I wanted to say that I did follow up directly with Ms. Sandmeyer on that. We discussed it, what that might look like, what the implications would be for staff time in the process with city council, and the abilities for staff to be able to look at this type of project. in the process with city council and the abilities for staff to be able to look at this type of project. Ms. Sandmeyer did have discussion with staff. And with our follow-up discussion, my understanding comes back to the beginning here, which is we are not a policymaking body. We are a policy recommending body. And that therefore the staff is not set up in their work plans to move through policymaking and supportive policymaking that is suggested by commission to agendize an item, even one that I would say I personally find myself likely to agree with, the direction the Commissioner Riggs was going with and would love to see streamlining in these types of instances. I think each of us might imagine other places. But from the follow-up with Ms. Sandmeyer and further understanding and from how I see my role as chair on our behalf and the community behalf, on an item that I'm going to suggest that we agendize. But I wanted to let you and also members of the public know that followed up on that, the reasoning that I undertook in conjunction with Ms. Sandmeyer, so that, that that would be transparent in that mix. I'll also be clear that it is my understanding that we are not precluded from agendizing an item. In fact, we might not be precluded from agendizing any item, but we are trying to work in partnership with what is already a staff that given both staffing levels and the amount of projects coming through, has a lot on their plates and we need to be cognizant of that. So let me pause there. This is actually not a discussion item and I can appreciate that that might be frustrating, but I do want to at least turn it back to Ms. Sandmeyer to see if I have fairly represented or if I have unfairly represented anything from your staff position in making that point.
Yeah, thank you Chair DeCarty. Yeah, I would say your summary is accurate.
Okay, thank you for that. The one thing that I did suggest, and I think it would be good practice, and I believe Ms. Sandmeyer's taking under advisement, is that I think it would be good annually for the planning commission. And I think it makes sense about this time of year when new commissioners come on, that we do review, essentially our charter as a commission, that we have an opportunity agendized at least once a year to remind ourselves about what we do and don't do and potentially to be able to have an open discussion from planning commissioners, either asking staff or discussion among ourselves about what we might or should agendize in the coming year. In my time on commission, we've done this. We had a subcommittee that looked at ADUs. I believe we've also done this on another topic that I cannot remember. So it's not unheard of, but it is, like I said, a fairly high bar. And I still think any commissioner should feel comfortable in this section of the meeting to make the same points the Commissioner Riggs did, Commissioner Sandmeyer. And I would absolutely, as chair, follow up again as I did here. So with that, I believe unless people have follow-up questions from Ms. Sandmeyer, and again, this is an agendized item, so we can't have discussion. I'm just trying to clarify. So any follow-up questions from Ms. Sandmeyer before I close the meeting? All right, with that, I think when we started, somebody was suggesting we could be done in a half an hour. Didn't quite do that, but it is 7:30. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Have a good couple of weeks and we will see you all next time. Have a good night.
Good night all.
Good night. Have a safe fourth.
Thank you.